Good evening. I'd like to call the August 13th Board of County Commission meeting to order. Welcome, everyone. First item will be the invocation and the pledge. If everybody will please rise.
I invite you to join with me if you're willing. As we see our children beginning another school year this week, we ask for blessings of safety in a troubled world. We ask for blessings of great teachers who do so much more than inform. They inspire the next generation of thought and achievement. And we ask for your blessings on our teachers, who we entrust our children to. May they find ears eager to hear, minds eager to develop, and hearts eager to embrace all that is new. And lastly, Father, we ask for your blessings on our parents and caregivers, who are so essential to ensuring that our children have the right foundation at home to learn and thrive. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So our first item is approval of the minutes from May 21st, July 2nd, and July 16.
We have approval. Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next item is public comment, excluding any of the public hearing items. Anybody wishing to speak? Seeing no one, we'll close the public comment. And first, I'm sorry. It is a public hearing, so when that comes up on the agenda. Thank you. Okay, our first proclamation is Resolution 19-157. Madam Clerk, will you read the proclamation, please?
Whereas, the Board of County Commissioners of St. Lucie County, Florida, has made the following determinations. On August 9th, 2019, Smokey Bear celebrated his 75th birthday, which also marked his wildfire prevention campaign as the longest-running public service campaign in U.S. history. Smokey's message is as relevant today as it was in 1944, as more people are living closer and closer to natural areas, so no retirement for Smokey. The mission of the Florida Forest Service is to protect Florida and its people from the dangers of wildland fire and manage the forest's resources through a stewardship ethic to assure they are available for future generations. In the last five years, Florida Fire Service wildland firefighters have responded to over 145 wildfires in St. Lucie County that have burned 2,852.2 acres, and in many instances, threatened communities and adjoining infrastructure. The Florida Forest Service is actively engaged in promoting and conducting prescribed burns and other wildfire mitigation practices to reduce the size and intensity of a wildfire that may threaten communities and other infrastructure. In the last five years, the Florida Forest Service has provided 5,430 burn authorizations to local ranchers, farmers, and land managers in St. Lucie County to maintain and restore natural ecosystems and reduce the wildfire hazard. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of St. Lucie County, Florida. This board does hereby proclaim August 9th, 2019, as the 75th birthday of Smokey Bear, and congratulates Smokey on his continued efforts to remind citizens to be careful when using fire in natural areas in St. Lucie County, Florida. This board also commends the men and women of the Florida Forest Service for their partnership with St. Lucie County and Smokey Bear in wildlife prevention and mitigation. Passed and duly adopted this 13th day of August, 2019.
Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
So, am I presenting to Smokey at 75 years old? I think that's great. And we have James Hall, who is a forest ranger. We have Raymond Kirkman, also a forest ranger. And Melissa Eunice, is that right? Wildlife mitigation specialist. So shall I give it to Smokey or one of you?
Absolutely. Yes, definitely would like a picture, if you guys are okay with that. On behalf of the Florida Forest Service, and Raymond, and James, and Smokey Bear, we'd like to thank you so much. We go out to preschools and elementary schools, and we bring Smokey's message to them. We like to educate children about the importance that matches and lighters are not toys to be playing with, and those are tools for adults to use. And if we can teach children to be responsible with fire, then we can stop little children from starting fires. Maybe they'll also grow up to be responsible with fire when they're an adult. And that's what the whole message is about Smokey Bear. And we try to reduce the number of wildfires by either burning, mowing, and chopping, and then educational programs like Smokey Bear and adult education programs as well. And we thank you always, this community, for your support. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Can we get you a picture?
Yes.
We need to turn around.
Okay.
There you go. Only you can burn forest fires. We're Smokey.
Thank you. Thank you all. And thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
So our next presentation is going to be by our own Jim Oppenborn on the St. Lucie County Artificial Reef Program.
Good evening, Madam Chair, rest of the board. I'd like to, for the record, my name is Jim Oppenborn, Public Works Department. I'll be talking about the county's latest artificial reef, the CCA Curtis Boswick Reef.
Curtis Boswick Reef. By the Times. Dates. I think it's listed on the Bernadette, Jim. Screen there.
They have it.
Go ahead. Oh, thank you.
It just.
All right. Real quickly, this ship was moved five times before she was finally underwater. Take-home message here is you need a marine contractor with his own boats that can provide the work in a timely manner. We moved the boat from the Miami River to the Summerlin Dock, to the Port of Fort Pierce, back to the Summerlin Dock, back to the Port of Fort Pierce, and then finally, we get it deployed. So that's very, very important to have a contractor who can do such work. Here you see the ship arriving at the Port of Fort Pierce. This was in June of 2018, shortly before or after I had requested your permission. Here, when docked at the Summerlin Dock, MMPS Environmental, along with some very important other people, actually helped us salvage some memorabilia. Here you see one of the important organizations, the St. Lucie County Sheriff's Department, giving the ship's skiff a ride to the nearest boat ramp. Once done with the salvaging, McCullough Marine Services moved the boat back to the Port of Fort Pierce, where McCullough Marine Services and Marine Environmental salvaged the ship. You'll see various fluids, hazardous wastes, were removed there and pumped into that tank at the bottom. The extensive cleanup continued with movement of heavy materials by a crane from the ship. The original six-cylinder diesel engine was then salvaged, removed. You can see the exterior of the engine was totally clean, but they couldn't get to the underneath of the engine, so what they did is they removed it onto a waiting flatbed trailer, never touched the port. On the bottom, you'll see the seventh 20-yard dumpster full of floatables, things like plastics, wood, other trash. From there, the ship was moved back to Summerlin Dock, where we proceed with community outreach. First slide, you'll see the president of the IRC Science Club entertaining young children at the Oxbow Eco Centers Earth Day Festival. The upper right, you'll see, that's Pirates, Inc. It's a TV show, reality TV show. The third slide is a group of family from Wisconsin, learning about the ship's wheel and the ship's history at the Manatee Center. And the fourth slide, thanks to Wayne Keygarden, he introduced us to these two veterans groups, American Legion Post 40, and Providers of Freedom. And it wouldn't have been possible without local business support. You see the various businesses displayed memorabilia from the ship. Finally, with four days left until the deployment, McCullough Marine Services towed the boat back to the port, where the masks were removed, additional 325 tons of concrete was put into the vessel, and holes in both the interior and exterior of the boat were cut to assist in water circulation and marine life, and to actually assist in the deployment itself. And of course, aside from having the donation, the original donation of the boat from the U.S. Customs, all sorts of public agencies actually helped us with the deployment as well. Without any one of these agencies, it would not have been possible. Here you see various agencies, the Coast Guard, Customs, FWC came down, and they actually toured the boat and learned about the cleanup. Very, very impressed. And of course, we had nearly 300 boats actually came out and watched the deployment, so the help of the Coast Guard and the Sheriff's Marine units were absolutely indispensable in this case. Increased the regional tourism, the fish assemblies have not been developed yet, but already we've had a local dive shop, Stuart Scuba, who's taken three boats out there, divers, all but the first one were full to capacity. And then in addition, we're still having fundraising. June 19th was the Bottoms Up Open Public House Auction. June, excuse me. July 24, we had a phone discussion with Saltwater Interactive and Discovery Education, so that's a possibility that we'll get additional funds. We'll talk about that as it comes. August 3rd, the Friedas's, along with their Rusty Putter Restaurant. They actually put on a benefit for us, the most sincere people that I've ever met, really, really nice people, and hopefully we'll get a chance to meet them a little bit later. We also had a request from Pirates, Inc. That's a reality TV show that shot on location for a donation from the A and E Channel. In-kind donations, again, all of these donations were absolutely essential to this deployment. I did want to highlight MMPS Environmental. They were with me from day one, and the 14 years I've been doing this, they were with me, actually more than a year, each and every day, such that I would talk with them, I'd receive calls three, four times a day, sometimes more, tell me what's going on, and ask me for my advice and things like this, so much to the point that I almost felt like we were attached at the hip sometimes. But they are really, really good people, good friends. And of course, I did want to mention two of our fundraisers, the Rusty Putter Restaurant and the Bottoms Up Open House. Cash donations, the Coastal Conservation Association of Florida, CCA, along with their Music City Sister Chapter, have donated a total of $50,000 to this project. And I'm hopefully going to be able to award the naming rights to these people, this organization, really, really good people. They were the first ones I called, even before I got back. I was back on the road from the initial inspection with MMPS Environmental, and sure enough, they've come through in the end, yes. Anyway, take-home message from this, total cost of accounting, average of $1,000 per linear foot, should have been $180,000. McCullough Marine Services gave us a great contract of $149,000. We actually had to add some concrete to the ship to get her to be stable at 100 feet of depth. The total donation then came up to more than $92,000. Total cost of accounting was $60,150. Still, that's $150 more than I told you, my budget. I told you I would not spend any reserves or any of the county's general fund money on this. On the bright side, money is still rolling in. We'll be receiving a check tonight from MMPS Environmental. That was the money that was coming into the Rusty Putter Restaurant's benefit, so I want to thank them very much for that in advance. Hopefully, there'll be time to bring them up here. And the FWC actually did a post-deployment dive. They came down from Tallahassee, and very, very interested in this. There you see the ship upright and on the numbers, something McCullough is very proud of. A flat deck is going to be good for divers, also going to be good for attachment of benthic On the lower left, you'll see some of the concrete that we put in as ballast. That's what McCullough refers to as a reef within a reef. That was actually 325 tons, just slightly smaller than what our normal, average, regular concrete reef is. So this is going to be very, very important ecologically. And just in case you didn't think you're going to get any science out of this from me, the FWC did see these organisms. You see them on the lower right. They're sea pens. There were dozens of them around the reef. Sea pens are in the Phylum Nidaria. They're actually a close relative of the stony corals that you see down in the Florida Keys and the Florida Reef Track. These sea pens, they don't provide any three-dimensional structure past what you see right there, but what they do provide is forage, especially for loggerhead sea turtles, a listed species, which has been seen quite a bit on our artificial reefs off this site. Also, the loggerheads have been noted to nest on our reefs, or our beaches, excuse me. With that, I'm hoping I didn't rush through that too quickly. If there are any questions, I'll be glad to answer them now, or if anybody wants to speak with me afterwards, I'll be here for a while.
Any questions for Jim, comments?
Madam Chair, I just want to recognize Jim for his efforts. A lot of work, Jim. You've got to be really proud. It was your vision.
Jim, before you sit down, sorry, you can stand right there. So the question is, I think the check is part of the consent agenda. Did you want to recognize and bring those folks up?
Yes, I would. Thank you very much. Can I bring both checks at the same time?
Yep.
Thank you. Everybody, I want to introduce.
Jim, you need to talk in the mic, please. Thank you.
Hello, everybody. I'd like to introduce you to the CCA, the Coastal Conservation Association of Florida. They're the ones that did all the work, and when they realized that we needed more money, they actually enlisted their sister chapter, the Music City Chapter of the CCA. McCullough Marines, I'm sorry, MMPS Environmental, I'd like to invite them up here as well. CCA has actually done so much. CCA Florida has donated $25,000. They've got their sister chapter to donate another $25,000. They actually brought this vessel up to their national meeting in Dallas. They've auctioned materials off, and they've been great. MMPS Environmental, they've been with me since day one, more so than any volunteers. I mean, a lot of people came and went, and they were either there at the beginning or there at the end, but MMPS has been there since day one. They went down to inspect the ship. If they hadn't been so excited about the vessel, I would not have attempted, I would not even tried to get this vessel. Mark? Oh, there you go. Frank Gaitis? Norman Ridgely? And Mark Music and MMPS Environmental, the whole clan is here.
Can we show the checks to the camera?
Well, hang on.
I just really, I wanted to say real quick, CCA does this type of work all over the state of Florida. Last year, we did seven of these, and I can say without a doubt that St. Lucie County, and working with Jim Oppenborn, has just been a first-rate experience, extremely professional. Jim knows this process through and through, and it's just been a real pleasure to work with you guys, and we're just excited to be part of this. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Since there's a camera up there. I just wanted to say thank you to the County Commission for giving MMPS the opportunity to work with Jim doing the artificial reef programs. Hopefully, we were able to bring in some more money, thanks to the Rusty Putter and the Friedas's. And we also have some good news. We got some money to bring in for you guys. We also have a couple of things on the horizon. I have Julie here from Saltwater Interactive to give you a little bit better of a understanding. She can speak better than I can, so.
Julie, can I get you over here for a second?
To describe something, we have a couple of plans we have coming up.
Well, sure, yeah. Very, very quickly, we have an initiative that we are in discussion with Discovery Education. We will have a final approval from them within the next two weeks to be able to go out and get funding for this, but it would involve significant interest and support from Discovery to bring a 12-week educational initiative to St. Lucie County with live lessons from marine conservation and marine biology experts, shooting from St. Lucie County, discussing a range of topics. Discovery Education, the great part is, they reach 50% of American school districts at present, 5 million educators, 51 million students in 90 countries worldwide altogether. And then in addition to that, Discovery has already expressed an interest in bringing a field trip component to St. Lucie County at the end of the next school year, ideally to watch a future deployment of a vessel of Jim's creation, but they'd want to bring the students in for a weekend or for a series of days to come in and volunteer and learn about eco-related subjects and conservation. So we're very excited and looking forward to being able to discuss it further. Thank you.
I'd like to bring Jimmy up, Jimmy Friedas up here, the Rusty Putter Restaurant. Jimmy, if you can just say a few words.
I'll try to make it brief. Well, I want to thank St. Lucie County for coming out and supporting the fort. I just know that when the boat sank, there was like 300 boats there. Well, we had a party, and 300 people at least showed up to it, and everybody had their wallets open and their hearts open, which is really, really a good thing to see. And I want to thank Kathy Townsend for all her organization skills, having those late-night meetings with my wife, Mary Friedas, and myself. I really appreciate it, Kathy. You did a great job, and we can raise more money. And there's just one thing I got to do, because I'm from New Jersey, I just can't help myself. I want everybody else to see it, too. All right? We had so many people just donate all the money. I'm a different type of person. Sean, you have a good time at the party? Did you have a good time at the party?
Absolutely.
Bumping into everybody?
Absolutely.
Thanks for having us.
At the end of the day, we deployed it. I was fortunate enough to go out with Jim.
That was awesome stuff.
I get goosebumps thinking about it.
More for us to do. I appreciate the time that you've given me here tonight. Thank you very much.
Good job, too, Kathy.
Real quick, I want to introduce Krista Stone, Katrina Collins, Kathy Green, John Manikos, all part of my team on MMPS Environmental. And Krista has a few words she would like to say, so Krista, would you please stand up?
Say she's going to sing.
Yes, sir. Short, my middle name. Good evening, Chair. Thank you so much. I would just like to address you, as well as our audience, and say thank you very much for giving Mr. Oppenborn the opportunity to be seen. Five years ago, I stormed through his door, and I said, "Everybody has to know who you are. You are incredible. What you do is monumental," and the same with Mr. Mark Music. And it is full circle to see the appreciation, not only up here, as well as in the audience, and to see that now this is a global appreciation of what is in our backyard, right here in St. Lucie County, the fort, and it's a great opportunity and something I'm very thankful and honored to watch Mr. Oppenborn and Mr. Music create. Thank you all for your support.
Madam Chair, I just want to say something very quickly. This is a beginning, and it's a beginning of a future, I think. It's a bright future for St. Lucie County, and it's because you brought here, as Commissioner Zdowski can witness, a vision and a dream. And I know it was struggles, and I know that you had a lot of bumps in the road, but I think a foundation has been clearly set for you in order to take this and move it forward. So I do want, for the record, you said it cost the county $60,000, Mr. Oppenborn, but I do believe with some of these funds raised, we are now less than $60,000 out of the county. So I just want to make that noted for the record, and I have all faith that the rest of that money will be raised, that we will have met your goal at the end of the day. So I want to personally say thank you. And Mr. Friedas, it was a pleasure to be able to do an event with you and your wife. You were amazing. You're a great team. Thank you.
Squeeze down. Everybody shift down to the center.
Can I get some tail?
I'm not.
Hey, Jim? Jim, are you going to leave you guys from this side?
Come on up here.
Get them all in there.
Nope. Everyone, Katrina, you guys need to come on this side. Yep.
Put the little guy in.
There you go. Perfect. Not that far over. Just shift the pounds the other way. All right, but if I can't, you can't see me, then I can't see you. Commissioner Zdowski, Mr. Mitchell, can you come over to the side? There you go. There you go. Everybody look this way, ready? All right, got it.
Are you? I can't dive in, thank you. I'm almost there. Thank you so very much.
And Jim, I'll be diving in on Thursday. If you need, if he, I'm diving in Thursday if you need pictures.
They took the big checks, which I always question as to whether there's an account number and MICR encoding. However, they left me one with a routing number and an account number. Thank you very much.
Said as a banker.
Thank you. Next item is the consent agenda. Item four has been pulled prior to the meeting. Couple of things have been, I see number one has been amended, number two has got an attachment added.
Madam Chair, the one that was pulled was 8F4, just for the clarification.
Yes, sorry.
Excuse me, Madam Chair, 8F4 was pulled?
Yes.
Okay. Are we discussing it, or it's just been pulled for the night?
It's just been pulled.
Pull it and perhaps bring it back next week, but we're looking at some options to work that out.
Okay.
So, if you've all got that, I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, before we do that, I would just like to have a point of, just a little brief thing, so that the people in Lakewood Park, do you know on item I4, I'm okay with this, but I just want for the people that watch at home and for the people that are here, to understand that the public works on the consent agenda is for the downstream improvements with the Fort Pierce Farms Water District. We've had a couple of years in discussing this, and so we're finally there, and I just want it to be noted on the record for them to understand that are watching, that this is the beginning of the improvements to take the water downstream, so, thank you.
Any other comments? I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And now, we go on to the public hearings. 9A, the resolution 19-134, designating property at the Port of Fort Pierce as brownfield Anyone? So, go ahead. Peter, you're doing a presentation?
Madam Chair, yes.
Thank you.
I can't. That is on. Madam Chair, Commissioners, good evening. Peter Jones, for the record, your economic development manager. I'm here tonight with Matt Shelton with Tetra Tech, who is our consultant for this effort, Stephanie Height with the Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council to my immediate left, and Dan Zrelk with Artiman Associates. And Matt is going to give a brief presentation on our efforts for this endeavor, and then Stephanie and Dan are here to help answer any questions that may be brought up for us. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Matt.
Thank you, Peter. Thank you, Commissioners, for letting us present to you tonight. As we said, we're here to discuss the resolution for brownfields, for brownfields designated area at the Port of Fort Pierce. We're seeking to establish that designated area on the property that's solely port property, does not include any of the parcels that are outside of the port property. The area includes the King Terminal Acquisition Area, and this is an area that's targeted for redevelopment by the Port of Fort Pierce. A Phase 1 and Phase 2 environmental site assessment was done as a part of the due diligence prior to the county's purchase of this property, and during the course of that investigation, there were some minor petroleum hydrocarbons that were identified on the property, and there's some additional investigation of a former packing plant that also needs to be completed. So, in order to assist in the funding of that, we wanted to create this brownfields designated area because of the benefits of the brownfields program. Those include liability protection for the county, potential grant funding for the county, tax credits to the county, as well as an expedited review of documents, and I'll go over this a little bit more here in a minute. But first, so what is a brownfields? So, brownfields is defined as any real property where the expansion, redevelopment, or reuse is complicated by actual or perceived contamination. And you notice the word perceived is bolded and underlined because that's something that a lot of people don't know or don't understand about brownfields, is just because you designate something as a brownfield area does not mean the entire area is contaminated. That's not what the brownfields designation is for. It's a solution to a problem of potentially having contamination or proper perceived contamination so that you can have that as a tool for redevelopment. So, the name is a real disservice to the program. I was not on the board that created that name. I wish I was, I would have used something a little different, but that's the name that we're stuck with. So, the name may not be good, but the purpose of the program is creating jobs, promoting voluntary cleanup, promoting the healthy environment, encourage the highest and best use of properties, so it increases tax revenue as well as providing jobs to the county residents, and encourages community vitalization and revitalization. And it does this by providing incentives. This is not a program that wields sticks, it's a program that offers carrots. Okay, so the King Terminal Acquisition Area, as we said, this is the focus of a redevelopment for the Port, Port of Fort Pierce. The property was acquired in 2018 after a period of due diligence. The property is 8.2 acres in size, located north of Second Street and north of Fisherman's Wharf. The Phase 1 and Phase 2 environmental site assessment that was completed back in 2017 prior to the purchase did identify that there was citrus product processing and packaging that had occurred on the site since the 1930s, and some of the activities on the site also included fueling and repair vehicles, equipment, and vessels. And you can imagine that especially back in the 30s, people weren't quite as careful with those materials as they are today. So, over time, some of that petroleum may have landed on the surface. So, as a result of that, Artiman Associates completed an extensive survey of the site, about 100 soil borings, including soil samples and groundwater samples, and there was one sample that exceeded the Florida Department of Environmental Protection soil cleanup target levels. If you look at the photograph there on the right, the dot that's in the center of the dashed circle is that one soil sample. The dashed circle represents the estimated limit of soils that exceed that cleanup target level, and if you notice the pickup truck to the left, it's about the size of that pickup truck. So, it's a relatively small area that we're talking about here. This is the figure that shows the brownfield designated area, and again, there's several parcels, again, all of which are owned by the Port of Fort Pierce, by St. Lucie County. The red area dictates all of the parcels that are included in the brownfield designated area. Okay, so what are the benefits of the brownfield program? It provides liability protection for the county. It does that through the brownfield site remediation agreement. Under that agreement, the county will agree to perform a specific cleanup on the property, and that agreement is with the Florida Department of Environmental Protection. You're not admitting that or saying that you are responsible for the contamination, you're just saying that you're going to volunteer to clean that contamination up, and that limits your liability. You're not a responsible party responsible for the contamination. In addition to that liability protection, there's grant funding that's available, and this funding is not available unless you have a brownfields designated area, which is why we're here today. The first of those grants listed is a targeted brownfields assessment grant. That's US EPA funds that are provided to FDEP for management. There's an application, it's about five pages long, so it's a very easy application. It's, it is a competitive grant, but it's not highly competitive, so highly likely that you would be able to win those funds. The grant covers up to $200,000 for assessment and remediate, excuse me, assessment and remediation activities on the site. A similar grant is offered by US EPA. They have brownfields area-wide assessment grants, cleanup grants, and revolving loan funds. Those grants, the application packages are quite a bit more robust than the FDEP package, and they're highly competitive. You're not as likely to win for that same $200,000 grant, so we're going to focus on the targeted brownfields assessment grant for this particular project. Whether you receive that grant or not, voluntary cleanup tax credits are also available, and that's annual 50% cleanup of the cleanup costs come back to the county in cleanup tax credits, and a one-time 25% bonus. Well, the county's not going to pay taxes, right? So, what good is a tax credit? Well, you can take those tax credits and one time you can sell those tax credits to pay for the cleanup, use it as an economic development tool, whatever you see fit. In addition, there's expedited review of documents, so the bureaucratic process of the cleanup is expedited, and there's a job bonus refund, and there's a potential of $2,500 per job if a minimum of 10 jobs are created. So, an example of a great program that I'm aware of was Melbourne Airport. They did a similar thing. They designated the entire airport as a brownfield designated area. They used that as an economic development tool to bring in new companies. In 2012, Embraer came in, they created 200 jobs. Each of those jobs received that job bonus refund, so it's quite a benefit for an economic development tool, and that brownfields program provides those tools. So, what is the process? The first thing is to have communication and support from the regulatory community, FDEP. When Artiman Associates originally did the due diligence report, the Phase 1 and Phase 2 site assessment, they presented those results to the DEP, and it was the DEP that offered the brownfields program as a great solution to the redevelopment issues on the site. Some months later, we came back to them with a resolution, which we're having the first reading for tonight, and they've reviewed that, and they're in support of this resolution. So, the resolution is the first official act to establish this brownfield designated area. That's why we're here tonight, the first reading is tonight. There's a second reading on September 3rd. A public notice has been provided in accordance with the regulations, so people can comment as they see fit. Should the commission approve this designation on September 3rd, we'll have 30 days to notify the DEP of the resolution, move forward with a targeted brownfields assessment grant application, enter into the brownfield site remediation agreement with DEP, and then we'll continue the site investigation remedial actions as necessary for the site to ultimately redevelop the site and try to do that at a minimal cost to the county, using brownfields economic development tools as a solution. With that, we can take any questions that you may have.
Madam Chair, if it's possible, Stephanie represents the Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council, and as you may or may not be aware, they manage the funding here in our general area for brownfields, and because she's been very much involved with what the city of Fort Pierce has been going through, is again, a great example of the brownfield-type funding and grant opportunities and work, so Stephanie, you want to just?
For the record, Stephanie Height, Economic Development Director for the Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council. As Peter said, we do have a robust brownfields program that we've had since 2003. We did revolving loan funds and subgrants and all the cleanup of the HD Kings site, so if you're looking for a good example of how this can be a catalyst for redevelopment and move along your projects' economic development, then that's definitely a good sign. They just, I know our negotiations right now with a developer for that site, so they've moved forward, and it's just down the road from this one, so it's a good thing for that whole downtown area, for the city and for the county. We also were recently awarded an EPA assessment grant, so we do have funding now, and the, one of the clear things that EPA wanted this time was the nexus to water. So, this would be like the perfect opportunity that maybe we could help you, providing some of those, you've gone through your assessment stuff, but we can also help with some planning and stuff with that grant. And then, we also do have revolving loan fund that provides low interest loan for you to be able to clean up. So, as they've all said, there's a lot of benefits that you can stack onto, you can leverage resources, and this is just another tool that you can put in your toolbox to help with your economic development and advancing the port.
Thank you.
With that, we'll be pleased to answer any questions, or wait till after the public hearing portion if there's a need to answer any other questions?
Madam Chair, Commissioners, may I ask Peter just to clarify something for us? When we talk about the pollution and contamination that was found at the port, can you describe when that was found?
Well, that was part of the assessments, or the very thorough due diligence that the county did prior to the purchasing of the property, and certainly, Dan could speak to that, as his company was responsible for that investigation.
Part of the due diligence, and that was part of what was disclosed as we talked publicly about the purchase of the port.
Absolutely. I remember very well sitting in the audience, listening to the presentation, so.
Thank you.
This item requires a public hearing. Anybody who wishes to speak on this item, please approach the podium. Seeing no one, are there any questions or comments from the board?
Madam Chair, I just want to recognize this effort, this board and previous boards who made very courageous decisions to move forward with this port, to get it into a pro economic pattern, since it had been 15th out of 15 deep water ports. The one thing that we collectively have stated is that the environmental concerns are a high priority, and that's why we're going through this process, to make sure that we, as a governmental body, who have, in our mission statement, environmental concerns, so we are doing just that. And Dan, you presented here several times, and the environmental, you did Phase 1, Phase 2, and then you had the final report, so it has been an extensive process, and we, as a board and staff, should be very proud of our position on maintaining our environment, especially around the lagoon, so, thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Any further comments?
Madam Chair, I don't think there's any action for the board to take, as been indicated, this is the first of two public hearings. I will say that the public hearing will be on September 3rd, as been mentioned, at 6:00 PM. There was an advertising glitch, not the county's fault. We have notified the newspaper, they're correcting that at their expense and cost, so they will be publishing a notice, a corrected notice, to make sure we comply with the law, but the next hearing will be on September 3rd at 6:00 PM.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
So, we go on to another public hearing, 9B, Ordinance 19-011, Art in Public Places, and I see Catherine up here to talk to us.
Yes, Madam Chair, Commissioners, for the record, Assistant County Attorney Catherine Barbieri, and as you stated, you have before you Ordinance 19, Art in Public Places Ordinance. In 1999, the Board of County Commissioners created the Art in Public Places Program. The program appropriates approximately 2% of eligible construction costs of county capital projects to Art in Public Places. Originally, the program was run by a cultural affairs department. In 2011, as part of a path to physical sustainability, the Board of County Commissioners eliminated the cultural affairs department and assigned, assisted in forming a nonprofit agency. That nonprofit was unsuccessful. The Board of County Commissioners has contracted with Brevard Cultural Alliance to provide services building a sustainable local arts agency for St. Lucie County. In March 19, 2019, the Board designated the St. Lucie County Cultural Alliance as a local arts agency. This ordinance changes the name of the council to the St. Lucie County Cultural Alliance. It broadens the definition of the artwork that is available under the Art in Public Places program. It adds an advisory committee for the Art... It adds an advisory committee for the artwork, and it previously changed what was previously a master plan to an annual plan, which is to be constructed in cooperation between the Art in Public Places Advisory Committee and the St. Lucie Cultural Alliance, and then approved by the Board of County Commissioners. The Board of County Commissioners granted permission to advertise on July 2nd, 2019, and the advertisement was run in the Treasure Coast Newspaper on July 31st, 2019. And staff is recommending approval. The Board adopted the ordinance, and this is a public hearing.
Thank you. As a public hearing, I'm opening the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. Any comments or questions from the board?
Madam Chair, I have a comment. I think it's important for the public to know that this is not affected by the sales tax. There's no sales tax used in this. Is that correct, Mr. McIntyre?
That's correct.
That's right. In this ordinance, we have clarified that it does not apply to infrastructure sales tax. And the reason for that is that when the ballot question that we had was very specific about what those funds can be used for, and so we're just, it's really a clarification in my mind.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments, questions?
Move approval.
A motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Carrie Swarfield. So the next public hearing is the FPNL Solar Energy Center, which is a conditional use permit.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. For the record, my name is Jody Natchwick. I'm a senior planner, along with Amy Cooper from the Environmental Resource Department, presenting the petitions for Florida Power Light, who is requesting a conditional use permit in a major site plan to allow the construction and operation of a solar generation station. A solar generation station qualifies as a targeted industry for St. Lucie County and is given an expedited review time. In accordance with the public notice requirements outlined in Section 11.00.03 of the St. Lucie County Land Development Code, public notice was advertised in the St. Lucie County Tribune on July 31st. A sign was placed on the property, and mail notices were sent out to the surrounding property within 500 feet radius. The applicant, Florida Power and Light, is requesting this conditional use permit for a solar generation facility on 955 acres of land located at 6201 Minute Maid Road, just south of the St. Lucie Indian River County line, east side of 122nd Avenue, and northwest of the Florida Turnpike, as depicted on the map. The proposed solar generation facility will interconnect into Florida Power and Light's transmission system, located two miles north in Indian River County. Power distributed by this facility will create renewable energy, contributing directly to all Florida Power and Light's 4.8 million customers. The subject parcel is outlined in red currently, Zone AG5. The purpose of the AG5 district is to provide and protect an environmental suitable for productive commercial agriculture, together with other such uses as may be necessary to incompatible with productive agricultural surroundings. Solar generation stations are permitted as a conditional use, subject to the requirements in the St. Lucie County Land Development Code, Section 7.10.28. The standards of review requires the applicant to demonstrate compliance with the Land Development Code and a comprehensive plan. Compatibility with adjacent uses, adequate public facilities, adequate fire protection, and no negative environmental impacts. This petition meets the standards of review and is set forth in the Land Development Code. The aerial displays the existing land use pattern for this area is agricultural, which provides a low-impact uses compatible with the operations of a solar generation station. The only traffic to and from the site will be for routine maintenance. By nature, our photovoltaic solar facilities are passive, quiet, low-generating uses, which are well-suited for agricultural uses. The applicant has submitted a companion request for a major site plan, along with the request of two waivers from the Land Development Code pertaining to lot coverage by structures and perimeter landscape buffers. The 74.5-megawatt facility will generate enough electricity to power approximately 15,000 homes. The solar generation facility includes approximately 300,000 solar panels, stabilized access paths that will be utilized for maintenance, and a substation solar collector yard needed to operate a solar generation station. Access to the property will be from Minute Maid Road. The applicant has requested a waiver from all the landscape buffering requirements, since this will be an unmanned, private, remote site with no adjacent residential development. The Environmental Resource Department supports this waiver due to the remote site location, potential shading conflicts associated with landscaping, and power energy, solar energy The applicant has requested a waiver from the 10% maximum lot coverage, as 30% of the lot is proposed to be covered by solar array structures. The panels for the facility cover a large amount of land, however, do not require footers, which maximizes the amount of pervious area on the ground below. In accordance with Section 11.00.03 of the Land Development Code, notices were mailed to seven adjacent property owners located within 500 feet of the subject parcel. As of today's date, staff has not received any objections. The Planning and Zoning Commission of St. Lucie County held a public hearing to review this proposed conditional use permit at their June 20, 2019, meeting. After discussion of planning, the commission voted unanimously to recommend approval of the request with the removal of two staff-recommended conditions, restricting the working construction time and the exterior lighting, as this would not adversely impact any adjacent neighbors. Staff has determined that the proposed conditional use in the major site plan meet the standards for review outlined in Section 11.02.03 and 11.02.07 of the St. Lucie County Land Development Code. Respectfully and are consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the comprehensive plan, therefore, staff recommends approval, subject to the conditions outlined in Resolutions 2019-158 and 2019-161. This concludes staff's presentation. If available, answer any questions. The applicant's representative, John Long, with Gunster Law Firm, has prepared a brief presentation.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me okay?
We can.
First time.
It is, it is. It's a pleasure to be here this evening. For the record, my name is Kate Cotner. I'm the Senior External Affairs Advisor for Florida Power and Light. My territory is Martin and St. Lucie Counties, and while my address is really my car, technically it is 700 Universe Boulevard in Juno Beach, 33408. So first, I'd like to take this opportunity and thank staff for all of their hard work. They've been, you guys have been wonderful partners, and we're very excited about this project before you today. I also wanted to take this opportunity to tell the Board of County Commissioners and the residents of St. Lucie County just a little bit about Florida Power and Light and why this project is so exciting. Currently, the state of Florida now ranks sixth in the country for universal solar capacity. And while we're very proud to be a national leader, we know that we can do more. So Florida Power and Light has recently launched its 30-by-30 program, which is a plan to install 30 million additional solar panels by the year 2030. I'm very excited to tell you that when this is done, we will be a global leader, the state of Florida will be a global leader in solar energy. So to accomplish this goal, Florida Power and Light is installing 74.5-megawatt solar energy centers across the state of Florida. So each one of these sites, it generates enough power to power 15,000 homes. It also creates approximately 20 to, sorry, excuse me, 200 to 250 construction jobs for each one of the projects. Some other exciting things about it is that they're very passive, they don't create light at night, and they create almost no noise at all. And we also, they're designed to avoid wetlands and habitats, if possible. So before you today is Florida Power and Light's third project, and I have here Scott Scoville to talk about our third project here.
Good evening. My name is Scott Scoville. I'm a senior project manager with Florida Power and Light, and I'm responsible for developing the FPL's Pelican Solar Energy Center. My business address is 700 Universe Boulevard, Juno Beach, Florida, 33408. Thank you for having us on the agenda tonight. We are excited to be seeking the approval for our third solar project in St. Lucie County. Our first project was completed in 2018. That's our loggerhead solar energy center. Our second one, the FPL Interstate Project, came online earlier this year, and we are excited to be here for the third project, the Pelican Energy Center, which is up here in the northern, northern part of the county. It's on the Indian River-St. Lucie County line. This picture, this display here shows the, kind of zoomed in of the site. Pelican Solar Energy Center is five and a half miles south of State Road 60. It's eight miles north of Orange Avenue, and we're about six miles west of I-95. Access to the site is via private right-of-ways. Our primary access is from Minute Maid Road from Orange Avenue, and we have easements that get us from our project site all the way through to Orange Avenue. Once we have a contractor onboard, if we think it's necessary, we may seek a secondary access off of 122nd Street, but if we determine that it's necessary at that time, we will work with the St. John's Improvement District for use of that road. But at this time, our primary and only access is from the south via Minute Maid Road and As Kate said, this project is 74.5 megawatts. We are currently developing 500 of 955 acres. This was originally an old citrus grove that we are converting to a solar energy center. We absolutely love this project, because it is in the middle of nowhere. Access to the site is via private right-of-ways, and there are no residential homes around the project. The nearest residence is a mile and a half from the southern, southwestern, eastern corner of the project, and I think he's moving this month. So there's no one around the area. It's really nice. And additionally, we are interconnecting into our transmission interconnection will be into the existing FPL transmission system that's located to the north in Indian River County on our Indian River solar project. You can see the red line, the label says blue, but it's actually the red line on the map. That's our transmission line coming up the eastern boundary of the project. It's all on FPL property. We will cross over the northern end of our property. There's a 500-foot strip between our northern boundary and the county line that FPL does not own. It's a private land donor. We are crossing, we are working with him for an easement to cross his project, his property, and from there, we go over the St. John's Improvement District's flowway. We're working with them for a permit. We had a pre-permit meeting with them earlier this week to discuss the specifics of the crossing, but we see no issues crossing over. And it's nice that there's no, you know, no really additional system, transmission infrastructure required. We anticipate starting construction on the project as early as the fall of this year, and we'll tentatively finish up at the end of 2020. That schedule's subject to change depending upon our internal need and how we forecast these projects and approval. On this last slide that I have here, you can see it highlighted in the north there, the little highlight is, that is, we are 3,182 feet. Our closest panel to our northern property line is over 3,000 feet. On the east, you'll see a little highlight down here in the right-hand corner. Our eastern panels are 342 feet from our property line to the nearest panel. In the south is 144 feet, and in the west, we are 175. So we are clearly a lot of distance between us and our property lines. Like I said, we thank you for having us here tonight, and if you have any questions for us, for Kate and myself, if we can't answer them, I got a team of people behind me. So thank you.
Thank you. Before I open the public hearing, this is quasi-judicial, so if anybody has anything to declare, I can say that I have talked to the applicant as well as staff.
Madam Chair, I've done the same.
Ditto.
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 Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, this is a public hearing. I will open the public hearing at this time. If anybody wishes to speak, if they want to come forward at this time. Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. Are there any questions or comments?
Just one. You were, this is your third one in the county, and you engaged IRSC with the training. Is that still part of the process? Or do you have everybody trained already? Because you've gotten so many in the box already. Indian River State College was part of the training.
Right, it's part of the training. So, no, we certainly are continuing our training with them, our workforce training, absolutely. Is that answering your question?
Yep.
Okay.
Want a motion? If there's no other comments or questions... Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And we go on to...
Madam Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
I know they've got another one on this very same project later on into the regular agenda. Could we go ahead and pull that and go ahead and get it over with this later? Do we have the ability to do that? It's not a public hearing, but it goes with the major site plan.
Under 8-1.
Okay, and that item is 10B-1, FPL Pelican Solar Energy Center, and that's the major site plan.
This is just a regular hearing, right? So no open public, I'm prepared to make a motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Now we will go back to the public hearings.
Thank you so much.
And the next public hearing is Avalon Beach, major adjustment to a planned, to a PUD site plan. Who is present? Beth is going to present.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. For the record, Beth is with the Planning Department, presenting this petition for the major adjustment to the final planned unit development known as Avalon Beach. In accordance with public notice requirements outlined in Section 11.0003 of the Land Development Code, public notice was advertised in the St. Lucie News Tribune on August 1st. A sign was placed on the property, and mail notices were sent out to the surrounding property owners within the required 500-foot radius. The Avalon Beach PUD encompasses 15.83 acres on North Hutchinson Island and Fort Pierce, located approximately one-half of a mile south of the Indian River County line. This is an aerial perspective of the property, and the area outlined in red indicates the subject site. Avalon Beach is situated between the Atlantic Ocean and the Indian River Lagoon, and is surrounded by Avalon State Park, with the exception of the oceanfront parcels to the This development was originally approved in 2005 and is applied at 36 Single Family Lot Subdivision. That includes 32 lots west of State Road A1A and four lots east of State Road A1A. The lots west of A1A are approximately a tenth of an acre in size, whereas the lots east of A1A are approximately a sixth of an acre in size. Avalon Beach PUD has... Avalon Beach PUD has all infrastructure improvements completed. The zoning designation for the properties located within the Avalon Beach PUD are planned unit development and maintain a compatible future land use designation of residential urban. This major, this major adjustment is requesting to amend the Guiding Architectural Design Guidelines from the existing conceptual architectural models referred to as the Jeffrey Ray Models, to a set of architectural standards and design guidelines outlined by the Avalon Beach Architectural Committee. This proposal would require new development to incorporate a minimum of five key architectural elements seen here in achieving the desired Florida coastal contemporary style of architecture. The applicant has submitted these examples of what these minimum key elements may look like in future development. Given that these lots are a tenth of an acre, the footprint may not be comparable to the renderings, however, they depict how the required elements may appear. This style features larger exterior overhangs and a mix of finishes. In addition to the minimum architectural elements, the proposal will require no less than a 612 gable or hip roof, and that the exterior pastel color scheme must vary in color from the neighboring homes on either side. Six homes are currently constructed within the subdivision, and two building permits are issued for construction in-house currently, which will leave 28 homes to be developed in compliance with these guidelines. The developer owns 25 of the lots. The county's licensed architect has reviewed these minimum elements and has agreed that they meet the intent of the original PUD-designed aesthetics, as well as represent a way for the development to manage its own affairs as it relates to maintaining the value and design aesthetics as originally approved by the Florida County Commissioners. There will be no change to the approved site plan layout or final plat. In summary, this is a 36 Single Family Lot Subdivision. The applicant is proposing to eliminate the existing conceptual architectural models and replace them with a set of architectural standards and design guidelines. There will be no change to the site plan layout or plat. Staff's review has determined that the proposed changes to the Avalon Beach final PUD are in substantial conformity with the original approval as required in Section 110205, and recommends the board approve the proposed major adjustment to the Avalon Beach PUD site plan. This concludes my presentation. Staff and the applicant are available to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
This item requires a public hearing. Sir, this is your time.
For the record, I'm Mike Severco. I reside at 111 Ocean Estates Drive in the community of Avalon Beach. When I received the mailing telling us about the proposal, there wasn't enough information in there to make a decision of exactly what was happening. Listening to the presentation now, I still have many concerns. One thing that I'm certain of is that the motive for the changes are for profit, a profit motive for the developer. The county has taken action in previous times, which injured the residents of Avalon Beach. One of these was you changed the zoning on the oceanfront lots, and three years ago when I bought the house, I had a dune walk. Shortly after, the dune walk was no longer mine. There was a piece of property that the dune walk was now going to be ours, but there was no dune walk. For two and a half years, we waited for a dune walk, no dune walk. I contacted Diane Waite. She said, yes, the county was wrong. The county should have turned around and put a date certain when the dune walk would be built, and that she would work with us to get the dune walk. We do have the dune walk now, but I don't think it's complete. The access to the dune walk, the 100 feet or so from the road, has never been graded. So while we have the dune walk, you walk at your own peril to get to that dune walk. The original plan approved by the county had lockers alongside the dune walk. They were never built. So I think there's a profit motive that goes through this. In the presentation that was just made, they said that no two units will be built alongside each other with the same elevation. The developer has built two units. The two units he built were in violation of the Resolution 055356. He built them identical, the same, and because there's only a zero lot line and a five feet on the other side, it looks like a duplex. I contacted the zoning board, and I told him that the resolution wasn't followed. The zoning board came back and said, okay, you're right, we sent an inspector, it wasn't done, but you know what? We just told him he can't do this again. The community turned around and said, this is not acceptable. So the county turned around and said, okay, we will make him make changes. But the change he made was he took a, a strip, a molding in front of the unit, and he painted it a different color. Again, we said, no, this is not an elevation change. And finally, they made an elevation change, which was putting some shutters in to make one house look a little different than the other. So while I understand it's going to be, he's not going to do this, he's already done it in the past. In his letter, that, the opening letter to his application, there's a lot of statements which he's trying to make that he's doing this for the benefit of the residents, and he's doing this for the benefit of the county. I take exception to the points that he's bringing out. Yes, he's made some of these changes, but the changes were all made for him, not for the community. And I'll give you an example. We have two guardhouses. He did fix one guardhouse, he didn't fix the other. The reason he fixed the one guardhouse is because he wants to use it as a sales office. The other guardhouse, it stays the way it was. He wanted to fix the gazebo by the riverfront because this would help him sell property. Well, he hired a painter, I believe not a professional painter. When the painter didn't have a ladder to go to the top of the gazebo, they just stopped halfway up and said, well, I'm not going to paint that.
Madam Chair, can I stop you for a minute?
Sure.
Because I need to understand a couple of things. Because this is about the site plan as opposed to some of the issues you're citing for the HOA, really. Have you taken over from the developer the HOA documents?
No, we haven't, no.
So that's a challenge that you have within your community, I think.
It's a big challenge, yeah. It's a long way away from that happening.
Having been a, a one who took over from a developer, I understand your pain. So those, those decisions, I don't think we can handle here. So your grievances are valid because you lived there and you, you invested, so, but I think the challenge for us up here is that's an internal matter with your HOA and, and your developer. So I don't know that we can, you know, have any input on that for you today, but understanding your grievances, I understand, having been the developer.
Wouldn't you take in consideration that if the motive is profit, and that our investments will be in jeopardy again, that the county has a say in that?
I don't know that we do. Let me look over to our, to our legal advice. Again, this is probably 620 or 720, I don't know what they fall under, but that would be a state issue in, in that regard as opposed to this, this body.
Right. Again, the, I guess the profit motive, pretty much every developer that comes in front of us has that as certainly one of their motives. That's certainly not the only one, and it shouldn't be the most important one. So that's, that's a good point. So, but we are, I guess, we're looking at a major adjustment where the, as I understand it, I'm not, not the right person to talk about this, the Planning Department is, but they're, they're proposing to not change a lot of the fundamental building height, things like that. They're just changing the, the look, the architectural look of the, of the property, that sort of thing. So that's certainly relevant. If that's going to have a negative impact on your property value, that's certainly a relevant consideration.
But you're going to lower the price, you said, he's doing it for the price.
Certainly, yes, sir. You can raise that as, as certainly a relevant issue. But some of the things, as Commissioner Zadovsky pointed out, are not something that the board can deal with, any internal issue on, you know, with the documents and control. So Commissioners, that, that would be the, the challenge, is just trying to sift through what you can do, which is you're looking at a proposal to change architectural standards to try to make the community look a little differently. How is it impacting the existing neighborhood, their perspective on that, and then you can certainly go from there. But as you pointed out, Commissioner, there's not much you can do on, on the internal issues.
But again, I want to validate your concerns, having been in that position.
Well, let me bring two more points up then, maybe just something that you can address. In the presentation, there were architectural renderings of what would be acceptable. Okay? Now, I can tell you, any of these houses would not be built there because the lots are too small. Okay? I think it would be more beneficial to have a what would not be acceptable. Right? Because anybody could say this is acceptable, but nobody's going to build it. I'd rather see what's not acceptable so we know what we're dealing with. Because what's not acceptable, if you build a bungalow there or something. And I think that you have the power to turn around and say you want to see that, what's not acceptable. And that would turn around and give us more clarification, what we're getting into.
And what was your second point?
Second point, I forgot already, huh? Because I'm on a roll here, but I'm not prepared really because I wasn't going to come, but...
Well, what we can do is go back to the public hearing portion of this. Somebody else? Madam Chair? I'm sorry, trying to help.
Yeah, I'm finished unless I come up with the other point I wanted to make.
Okay.
Hi, Madam Chair, thank you for letting me speak. I'm Michael Rand. I'm owner of 6408 Ocean Estates Court within the community here. It's on the ocean side. I'm, I also own the adjacent lot to it, and from my reading of this material, they're limiting the height of the roofline, which would mean that I could not build a house equivalent to my house right next to me. My house is much higher than the limit that they're proposing in here, and that's very detrimental to me. I have probably one of the most expensive houses there. That whole beach side, I expect all the houses to be in that type of range. Mine's the only existing house on the beach at this point, and I'm concerned that the property value would be lowered if you wouldn't be able to build the same type of buildings that currently exist. Because this definitely does. It says it's a 35-foot height maximum, which is much lower than my roofline right now.
Madam Chair, can we correct that? Because we have a, we have a height limitation on the beach as it is, so.
Bethany was, she was going to, you were going to address? I heard you.
So just to touch on a little bit of what Mr. Severco said, the, the beach access, he had beach access. It was eliminated due to adjustments in the site plan. They went back and forth through, this is the eighth site plan adjustment, and so that, that confirms what he says. There was beach access, and then the access was amended to two dune access easements for use by the property owners of the abutting sides on the beach. And also Hutchinson Island Residential Districts on B, the maximum building height is 35 feet, unless you undergo a variance, which I don't believe there's been a variance for that site. It's measured from the finished floor elevation, so.
I can tell you 40-feet ladders won't even reach the soffits. So they had to bring cranes out to reach the soffits on my house.
To the chair?
So that's one.
When did you build your house, sir?
I didn't build my house, I bought mine.
When did you buy it?
I bought last 2018. It was built, I believe, in 2012, 2013.
Thank you.
But there's one other service that's not being completed out there, is we are supposed to have recycled water, I believe, is what it's the term.
Reclaimed.
Reclaimed water, and it is not brought to the beach side. Our house doesn't get it, and the developer has not fulfilled that obligation. And that's a major undertaking to cross the road.
I'm glad you're here. Because we were going to call you up.
Leslie.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, I, I'm here primarily to address the question of height. On the beach, height can be misleading because the finished floor elevation as set by FEMA requirements tends to be quite high. So I don't know the specifics of this particular build, but my guess is that the height from the finished floor elevation is 35 feet, but from the grade, it's much higher. Any other questions?
Thank you.
No, that, to the chair, that only makes sense. I mean, I have family from New Jersey, and when Katrina hit up there, when they rebuilt, they built high.
Right.
So if the water came in, you may have your parking garage underneath, your cars, but it was elevated much higher than that, so.
Right.
Thank you. That may answer your question.
But I do have the, again, the services are not complete in the subdivision.
Madam Chair, I just have a question. I want to confirm, Bethany. Is, in this change, is he looking to change, according to this gentleman, is he looking to change the height? Because what I read is he's not wanting to do that, he's just wanting to change the architectural model. He's not looking to change the height.
Chair of Arts, Commissioner Townsend, that's correct. There's going to be no change proposed to height, setbacks, maximum lot coverage, open space, et cetera.
Okay, I mean, because I just...
The wording states that it's limited now to 35, as if it was not...
It's always, that's, that is the code for the, for the island to begin with. So I just wanted to confirm that he's not looking to change the height. Nothing's changing there, it's just the outside architectural side.
To be clear, it's from the grade.
Madam Chair, can we, can I ask Bethany? On that list up there?
Yes, ma'am.
Those are the 10, what is it, one, yeah, the 10 architectural elements that he's asking for a minimum of five, correct?
That is correct.
It's nothing more than those 10, and I don't know if the public can read them from that far away. Only got them in front of us, but, um...
That's correct.
Of what the changes would entail, that's it, correct?
And it's at a minimum of five. So they may go above and beyond in selection and select all 10. But in addition to this, the proposal also outlines requirements such as the, the height of the roof, or the pitch of the roof, and also goes into the pastel and warm color scheme, how they may not be neighboring one another, two, two houses of the same color neighboring. But this is an outline of the entire proposal for the elements.
If you look at the architectural features of those 10, it's a no-brainer to do five of them. I mean, just read what you're talking about. To paint it, to put stucco.
But it allows them to put wood board siding, you know? It allows them to reduce the construction cost and bring in basically lower-cost housing in, in the subdivision. And that's what we, that's a main concern that we're having here. It's not being built to the same standards that we purchased based on, you know, believing that this subdivision was going to be built to these standards. And now he's got 25 lots that he can build a substandard house on.
And I remember now where my other point was, he's building a new house now, and you can't tell what it's going to be because they just have the cinder blocks up. And so I have no idea what it's going to be like, but I can tell from the cinder blocks and how it's laid out, it's going to be a totally different-looking house than anything you see in these pictures. It's going to be modern with the big, long windows, two-story windows that are just rectangles and stuff.
I can answer that. I did speak with our building staff today, who did the zoning review for those two houses being constructed, and they are being constructed in accordance with the older models, not identical to the Jeffrey Ray models, but incorporating the features that they do, that they do have.
Do we still have, is there more people?
We need to, yes. Gentlemen, I need to move on through public comment. I thank you for your time and your comments.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
The applicant and the agent are both here. If there's any unanswered questions?
Oh, let me, there anybody else who wishes to come before us? Yes, ma'am?
Podium.
Wherever you're comfortable.
Here's the podium.
Oh, he's saying go to the podium. They're going to be able to record you better.
Oh, he's saying go to the podium. They're going to be able to record you better.
My name is Liliana Epstein, and I reside at 150 Ocean Estates Drive at Avalon Beach. Mr. McIntyre, to your point, you did talk about developers having a prime motive of profit when they construct new developments, et cetera. However, there's a specific point in the proposal that speaks to that. And that first line in the second paragraph, the move away from conceptual models, is due to the cost to build. The approved models drives the price above what the market will bear, making these homes unsellable. The current developer has recently provided lot price flexibility consistent with current market demands, et cetera, et cetera. Any of the changes that the developer has made has been due to the insistence and urging of the residents. They weren't items that were taken upon the developer to do on his own. And when you talk about cost-effective, you talk about property values, our property values, that have to come into play. And I think it's something that you would consider. The fact that the developer has not taken these changes upon themselves to put into effect, to me speaks to the, to my lack of confidence that they will continue to maintain the properties in a manner which we're, we should be used to. There's very little maintenance on the property, on the lots, as it is. All we really have is a landscaper, someone who mows our lawn. As far as property manager, there's no property manager on our property. There is no one on a regular basis that comes to, comes to look at our property on behalf of the developer. And whenever there's an issue, whether it's a street light, or a water feature that doesn't work, or something is broken, it always falls on the residents to bring this up to the developer. Because again, there's nobody on-site to take care of these problems. So again, that doesn't give me a lot of confidence as to how the developer is going to maintain a standard, as Mr. Rand said, that our homes should have. And so property values and cost values are very big concern for all of us, I think.
I hear what you're saying, and I appreciate that. However, a lot of the issues that you've brought up, even though I may sympathize with you, are not things that we can do. That is your HOA, where you are going to have to determine and come to some kind of an agreement, as far as having somebody there, you know, that type of thing.
I understand that there's nothing you can do about that. I perfectly understand that. However, I think you need to have an entire picture
I agree.
Of the developer you're dealing with. That's why we're adding this kind of information. And in addition to that, we don't know, we haven't been informed, who the builder will be. The two homes that are being built now are being constructed by a company called TRM Contractors. We don't know who the builder will be for these new homes, whether it will be one builder or many builders. We don't know the quality of that. We don't know the construction. We don't know the materials. Again, that may not be something that we need to know at this point, but something that the board should take into consideration when you're dealing with our property values.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I'm going to employ the attorney once more. Sorry, Dan. But again, these grievances are, I would suggest, and I'm not the attorney, but this is a civil matter in their regard, because I'm wondering if we were to deny this completely, this request tonight, those issues would still exist? If there was an opportunity to condition this approval to some level that says, here's a list of grievances you've heard, how many of these are you going to agree to? How are you, are we able to do that from our position here to condition? Or if we just outright deny this today and send them back to the drawing board? So I'm sorry to put you under the gun there.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, you can certainly attach reasonable conditions that are related to the request. It seems like if the applicant and his agent are here, we ought to, we ought to listen to them and let them address some of the concerns. I think before we would deny it, if, I don't know if we anticipated, we had heard from these folks, before we did that, we might even want to think about continuing it for a couple of weeks to further investigate what's going on there, so we have a better understanding, certainly at a staff level. That's just an option. Of course, we haven't heard from the applicant yet. Perhaps they'll, they'll be able to clear up the issues.
Very good. Thank you, Dan. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Leslie, I see you up again, and you are not the applicant.
I am not the applicant. I concur with Dan. Mr. McIntyre, I think it may be a good idea, and this is up to the board, if, after you hear from the applicant, if you feel it would be wise for us to continue the item to a future meeting, for us to work out some of these issues and address some of those architectural concerns. We can certainly do that.
Thank you.
Good evening. For the record, Michael Houston, I'll call you in just a second. You guys got us confused because of how the speakers were using, using the table.
I've used us, too.
I'm with HGA Design Studio, and with me, with me is Matt Masaraba, who is the project manager for GEL Corp., and who actually is the person that people call when there's a problem. So what we're dealing with tonight, I was part of this 2005 approval, is beginning to reset from the recession. Mr. Gelman owns 25 of the lots. Four of the lots are owned by individuals. The rest of the lots have sat. If you've been by here, this is the one that they had three buildings that were empty. That was our second or third client at the time. They weren't empty all the time. They were, they were the homes of a lot of different people that would, pretty much, I suppose, it was homeless. I first want to say that staff has done a great job. Bethany and the staff at, in the planning department have done a very good job, because this is a very unusual project. Commissioner, your questions about this kind of drifting into HOA is really, really unusual for this project. And so what we're here tonight to do is to offer a set of standards that, you guys know PUDs, you don't see these kind of standards in PUDs. Well, because we had some from 2005, for whatever reason we had them, there were some that we, that we applied to, and they were conceptual drawings that really are very difficult to build. So I have a letter tonight, and we've been working on this now for, Matt's been working on this for quite a while. The buildings that we're talking about, the homes that we're talking about, are being designed by the same architect that did the updated concepts, the larger concepts. We're working with Colville Banker. Just so you're clear, the houses that we're talking about are $700,000 and $800,000 houses. That's what we're proposing. These are models that will be, 25 of these, $700,000 to $800,000. Now, there was confusion about the two models, and we understand that the neighbors' confusion, our mistake, two buildings got built together. That's really what prompted this long discussion with staff, and Bethany's done a great job of, and so has Peter, to very carefully walk through with the building department and with planning department, how this project relates to a building design. So that's what you see on the right, is the standards. And we actually submitted a new set of standards that will be part of the HOA documents. Buildings can't be the same one to the other. They have to apply five of the 10 standards, and the standards are quite good. $700,000, $800,000 houses. These are, these are not inexpensive houses. And they meet the market. And so Linda Schultz-Gonzalez wrote us a letter that she wasn't able to get here tonight. It says, guys, we're trying to move this project along, and million-dollar houses are not part of the market. So this is an unusual conversation to have with the commission, where we're talking about, should it be a million? Should it be $700,000? Should it be $500,000? Well, it's not $500,000. $700,000 to $800,000. These are going to be lovely homes. It's an unusual project. If you haven't been at it, you should go by and take a look. The dune crossover has been built. Matt was coordinated that, and he's here to answer any questions on the technical detail. And by the way, he has been working with the neighbors on the landscaping, on the gatehouse, on the crossing. The dune, by the way, the dune crossover is not a paved crossover, like all our crossovers. You walk through the sand to get to it. It has been leveled, but it still is a sand, sand crossover. It's never going to be paved, so. And if you go through the staff report, you'll see that, that staff has really looked at all these kind of details, which are very unusual. They're on the right-hand side. So we're talking about pastel colors, and Bermuda shutters, and decorative railings, and gingerbread. And the two buildings that are under construction, as staff just mentioned to you, are by the same architect that did the original building. So there's a lot of the same elements that are showing up. So it's an unusual situation tonight. We don't think we needed to delay it, because we think your staff has done a very good job. And the issues that the community has brought up, I could say that Matt has done a great job of beginning to kind of bring the neighbors into the discussion on what we've been doing here to try to resolve this. We're like, just excited about moving this project forward.
Madam Chair, while Mr. Houston is here, you may be aware that we have a beach erosion issue. It's not so much on the north beach as much as it is on the south side. We have a change in climate. We see ocean rise. We see higher issues of erosion, and the cost of that is exorbitant. And what the county has done is not deny people to build on the beach, but to let them understand, building on the beach comes with a responsibility as well. And we have put in processes, and your, this project came in before we, before we put in significant changes. And I'm going to read the statement that I'd like to consider, because some of the things that we talked about with, with the conservation easement, the PAMP, and some of the languages in policy 6.1.8.5, the comprehensive plan, cover the obligation of the HOA and the community for maintaining their dune. But as part of this, you know, we're trying to be consistent, and I have been from day one, trying to make sure that we don't get into a situation where we're trying to go into private developments and maintain somebody else's front, front yard, that being a beach dune. So the language says here, prior to certification of occupancy, the applicant shall provide a mechanism for perpetual financing responsibility for future dune maintenance. Basically, it says, that's your front door, that's your front yard, and so that if there is erosion issue, you're responsible for that dune maintenance. We've had that consistently throughout in the last few years, and you weren't part of the informal today. But Army Corps of Engineers is changing some of the concepts of how we get funding from them, including public access. So again, north beach is not usually prone to erosion as much as south. But we don't know what's coming. We don't know what kind of hurricanes will come to that, to that area. And so I'm asking if you would consider that as part of your, as part of your conditions of approval, because it already exists in the PAMP and the...
We talked a little bit about the dune, and that may be a question. We are, as you're, as you're aware, Commissioner Zdowski, we're an accreted beach. It's a growing beach, similar to the Atlantic site, and it's, it's growing. But did you have a chance to talk it? I know Amy was here earlier.
I have. I took a, can you hear me okay? I took a look through the documents and the original plat dedication. And essentially, that mechanism exists in the conservation easement, the dune easement as recorded, I believe. And it is also in the PAMP that the property owner is the responsible party for all costs associated with the maintenance of the dune. I believe what Commissioner Zdowski's asking is that with this approval, that our verbiage that we now use for current projects, coastal development projects, you wish that to be incorporated as a condition of approval
Correct.
On this resolution.
We require it of others. And as you said, north beach is accreting in most cases. And, but we don't know what the future holds.
Sure. But I believed it was in there, and so the language is what we're discussing.
Yes.
And probably, and this certainly is something, Commissioner, that affects also the four owners that are, or three that are represented here, and four, they probably would like to see it as well. So it probably would be important for us to maybe read that. And as Leslie said, Ms. Olson, maybe have that extra time to take a look at it. I did want to mention, because I know, you all know where this is. It's next to Avalon Beach. It's a special little spot. We have an access that goes out to the intercoastal. That's a special little piece. Part of this was also finishing up the preserve area management plan, not on the beach side, Commissioner, but on the preservation and the park side. And we did that prior to scheduling this meeting. So maybe, maybe we should take a look at that a little closer. One of the things that we're definitely attempting to do, and Matt in particular, who I've been working with now for six or eight months with GEL Corp., is to connect with the neighbors, rebuild the connections. And, because there's been a long period of time, this, these 25 lots were bought from a bank. The bank was, wasn't doing anything out on this site. And I think Matt has done a great job. Again, he's here to answer questions specific that the commissioners would have that came out of this, to build those relationships back.
Madam Chair, if I may ask, Bethany, in today's world, two crossovers would not be permitted for this particular development. Or do I need to look to Ben Volsor?
Jennifer?
Or Jen?
Jennifer?
Because we have, we've had to move to limiting the number of crossovers at the dunes, simply to maintain the dunes. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Commissioners, Jennifer McGee, Senior environmental planner for the record. We do try to discourage the number of dune crossovers for a subdivision. In this case, there is a shared dune crossover for the people on the west side of A1A. So that's why there is an additional, because they're utilizing it from the other side of the road. It's a shared dune crossover. So, but we do, for all projects now, try to reduce the number of dune crossovers, because it does open up during storm surge events and can, you know, threaten the stability of the dune.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, my one question. Did I get, I was getting the impression, so correct me if I heard you wrong, you would be in favor of us postponing or delaying this one for a couple of weeks to try to get to the bottom of some of this and let you connect with your residents?
Here's the question, because the timing on the models has been an issue along. Would the two weeks affect us at all in terms of the permits that are in right now?
I was out on the site today, and they, the construction has commenced, the permit issued. The final inspection for the models would, it would be one of the final inspections, review it for compliance with what is either approved today or has been approved. That inspection would be well down the road, towards the end of the...
Yeah, months, yeah. But this illustrates what we're talking about, is that, how many times do you guys have a discussion about where the building permit is? Whether or not your decision tonight affects a building permit. It's unusual. But we do want to get the, we do want to get the dune question very clear, and make sure that everybody's in agreement with what that means. I, I don't think it's a problem, but I want to be careful.
I'll just share with you, each of the developers who've come in front of us since I've been here, and I've only been here a short time, 11 years, I think. Not as long as you. But...
But not 2005?
It's, no. But, but seriously, though, I mean, this, this has become a huge cost to taxpayers. And while, you know, somebody who invests on beachfront property, power to you, but, you know, understanding there's an obligation to your doorstep, and it shouldn't be borne upon the residents of the county to support, you know, this, this maintenance. We're doing the best we can with what we have for the public accesses, but we do have a serious challenge in the funding of beach for nourishment. And so in order to stop or create a, deal with a systemic issue, let's start there. And that's why we've insisted on these things in the past.
Jennifer, the, Bob Wade is not here with us tonight, who did our preserve, but I believe the dune was in native condition. Some of the dunes, as you know, are scarred and scraped. This one was not. And so we didn't do a planting with that.
Yes, the dune is in fairly good condition in this location. And the dune, or the preserve area monitoring and management plan includes the monitoring and maintenance of that in perpetuity. The condition of approval that Commissioner Zdowski is referencing, you have seen it in other projects.
Yeah, we have.
It was recently done. It just adds a little bit of additional assurance that that financial mechanism is in place already, should a storm event come, that, you know, you can go out there and do your dune restoration immediately, because you already have those funds set aside.
And I'm almost certain it won't be a problem, but our attorney probably would want to look at that, Commissioner.
Thank you. Any further questions? All right. Any further comments from the public? Any further comments from the public? Seeing. Sir, you're going to have to get with him privately. You've had, you're going to have to get with her? Bethany, I've got to close the public hearing.
Oh, you just said it.
I meant other public. So I more than extended both of your times, so we really need to move on. Thank you, though. So seeing no one approaching, I will close the public hearing. Also, this item is quasi-judicial. Once again, I would ask if there has been anything that you need to disclose. I have only met with staff.
Ditto.
As have I.
Met with staff.
As have I.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, and what I heard from the board is that they would like to bring this back in a couple of weeks, and during that time, your department will meet with the applicant and make sure that the wording is right and that we are protecting our beaches.
Madam Chair, if I could encourage Mr. Houston and the applicant to possibly sit down with these folks and kind of work through that, because as, as, it will take some time to have control of the HOA. Again, like you said, it's unusual in this circumstance. But to have a say-so in their community and building that, that public trust between you, I think is important. Couldn't hurt to talk. And you may not, you may not agree, and they may not agree with you, but we always encourage, you know, communication and finding solutions. So hopefully that'll happen. Thank you.
Madam Chair, the suggested date for continuance, if we're talking about two weeks, would be Tuesday, September 3 at 6:00 PM or soon thereafter.
Move the continuance.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Okay, the last of the public hearings are the, is the Blair Grace Class A Mobile Home Permit, and that item has been pulled by the applicant.
Madam Chair, that's right. I believe the applicant has withdrawn. However, since the public hearing was noticed, the code requires that the board accept the application or the application to withdraw, and staff would recommend approval of that.
You want to open and close, she's got to open and close a public hearing first.
No, I don't, we don't open and close.
If you accept the withdrawal, then there is no public hearing.
Motion to accept.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. All right. Now we go on to D, the Sable Creek MSBU, the final assessment resolution. Who, there you are.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, for the record. Barbara Geller, MSBU Coordinator. The Sable Creek subdivision includes 155 single-family parcels and is located in PGA Village. A majority of the property owners within the Sable Creek subdivision submitted petitions to the county requesting that an MSBU be created to be, to fund the cost of constructing potable water and fire protection improvements to serve their neighborhood. In October 2017, affected property owners were notified by mail of their maximum assessment amount, and an informal meeting was held with property owners to discuss the MSBU process, project design, and project cost. In March 2018, the board held a public hearing to consider comments from affected property owners before accepting petitions creating the MSBU based on the maximum cost estimate and granting permission to proceed to 100% design. In October 2018, the board adopted the notice of intent resolution expressing its intent to use the uniform method of collecting commencing in November 2019. The project is within the utility service area of the Reserve Community Development District, which is in the yellow highlighted area on the map. The Reserve CDD purchases approximately 65% of its water from St. Lucie West Service District, which treats groundwater by reverse osmosis water treatment system, and the remaining balance is groundwater treated on-site by a lime softening water treatment system, and is then blended to provide the best water quality available. The board has executed an interlocal agreement between the county and the district, which provides that the county and the district will cooperate in providing potable water and fire protection improvements to the, to the Sable Creek subdivision. The board has also accepted partial assignment of dedications, easements, and rights-of-way from the Sable Creek Association and PGA Village Association to allow the installation operation and maintenance of potable water lines within the Sable Creek rights-of-way. In May 2019, the board approved the initial assessment resolution, which described the property to be located within the MSBU, estimated the cost to fund through special assessments, directed the assessment coordinator to prepare a preliminary assessment role, and authorized and directed staff to take such actions as may be necessary in furtherance of the project and the financing thereof through special assessments, and established tonight's public hearing. In June 2019, affected property owners were notified by mail of this public hearing and of their proposed assessment amount, annual payment amount, and discounted prepay amount. The method of assessment for the Sable Creek MSBU, as established in the initial assessment resolution, is assigning one equivalent residential connection, or ERC, per single-family home or buildable lot. If the board approves this resolution, property owners will have an opportunity to pay their assessment prior to financing being obtained, thereby avoiding costs related to financing. If not prepaid, annual assessments are scheduled to be collected for 20 years, beginning in November 2019. At this time, the annual assessment amounts are calculated with a conservative interest rate of 5%. The actual interest rate will be known at the time of financing. The final assessment resolution confirms the maximum assessed cost of the project to be $3.2 million. If the assessment is paid in full during the prepayment period, the maximum discounted prepay assessment amount is $19,355.12. The maximum preliminary assessment amount is $22,163.15. And the maximum annual assessment amount to be levied is $1,778.43. The assessments imposed against each parcel may be further reduced due to a lower interest rate and upon completion of the project, depending on whether contingencies arise during construction. If the project comes in under budget, property owners who prepaid the assessment will receive a refund of the difference. Assessments being collected annually with the property taxes will be reduced to reflect the lower cost. Assessments can be paid off or down at any time without penalty. Assessments run with the property, not the owner. Therefore, if a property is sold, the assessment is not required to be paid off. Many homeowners' insurance companies offer discounts when fire protection is available. Therefore, property owners are encouraged to contact their homeowners' insurance regarding possible discounts. It is not mandatory for existing homes to connect to the system. Those who do connect can keep their existing wells for irrigation and filling pools, et The resolution number 2019-169 constitutes a final assessment resolution as required by the county assessment ordinance. The purpose of the final assessment resolution is to determine that real property within the Sable Creek MSBU will be specially benefited by the improvements, ratify and confirm the initial assessment resolution, approve the assessment role, impose assessments upon all parcels described in the assessment role, and provide for the method of collection. Staff recommends board approval of resolution number 2019-169, and authorization for the chair to sign documents as approved to, by the county attorney.
Thank you. This item requires a, a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on the Sable Creek MSBU, please approach the podium.
Tony.
Sir, you get to go to the podium. Thank you.
Hi, David.
Yes, we will get signs.
Tony Naplatano, 7928 Saddlebrook Drive in Sable Creek. As a board member, Mario's here with me, a board member also.
I'll introduce myself. I'm Mario De Oliveira. I live at 7924 Saddlebrook Drive, Port St. Lucie, 34986. Poor neighbors.
And it's been a long time. We've been trying to get this, and we really appreciate all the efforts. So I'm hoping you're going to approve this, and we're going to move on. And I really thank the board, the attorneys, because I know there were some hurdles in this thing. It's a little bit different than a normal one, and we really appreciate it, and we're looking forward to having some clean water and fire hydrants. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
I do have two objections, one over substance and one over form. I know that she just mentioned that we had noticed and there was public hearing. As a homeowner, and I'm 100% disabled vet, I got two pieces of paper in my mailbox. One of them was initially notifying us that we were going to have the special assessments, this ad valorem assessment against us. And it basically, I don't have that sheet of paper with me in front of me, but what it basically told us is, guys, pay up $19,000 in a few months, or you can finance it at 5%, and it will end up costing you $35,000 over the long haul. That's a little bit excessive. And the other issue that I wanted to bring up is I think the assessment will be basically collected in November, $1,700 for the next 20 years. The De Oliveira household, since I can't work anymore, we're, we're kind of like in a Navy Sea Whiz mode. Sea Whiz is the defense on a Navy ship. It's a little R2-D2-looking thing that fires a lot of, you know, rounds at whatever's coming in. It usually hits the thing that's coming closest to the ship. That's how my finances are run at the house. So what I'm trying to say is Merry Christmas, we're, everybody's going to get a lump of coal. I'm wondering if there's a way we can just see some kind of accountability. I wasn't privy, I wasn't notified where the 3.2 million was. I believe Zefir Terminini is also one of my neighbors who wanted to speak. We were in the impression that it was a lot more than that, but I just wanted to log my objection as to those two points under the record, and I thank this Madam Chair and the Commissioners for your time. Thank you.
Madam Chair, before we listen to the next man, I just want to clarify, the maximum out-of-pocket is $22,000, is that correct, Barb?
That is correct.
It's 22,163.15.
And is it mandatory?
That is the maximum amount to be levied, yes. Now, if they're, they're accounting that they've paid interest for 20 years, that I believe is what they're, they're suggesting, the amount that we're levying. And that goes along with what we're getting from the bank. That's not a rate that we can determine. 5% is very conservative. We're looking at probably a little bit less than 3%, but to be conservative until we know and we close on the loan, 5% is, is what we go with.
I just have one more question with regards to that. I believe on her PowerPoint slide, she said no prepayment penalty. I believe the way that the letter was stated was, you guys pay up $19,000 now, and if you don't, you're locked in, and you will have to pay via the 20 years. So I just want a clarification for that.
No, that's not correct. Once you, once you, if you decide to prepay, then you're, you're not paying for financing costs and interest fees. There's a lot of fees that you don't pay for. If you don't do that before we obtain financing, then that amount is charged to the county, and we have to pay it back. So if you're, if you don't pay by the deadline, which is September 20th, then you do have some of those fees. But you can pay your assessment off at any time, which is also in the letter and the back-up material, without penalty. So from that point forward, you're saving interest, but you're still locked in to helping to pay for the fees that are already there, that were already incurred.
I want to thank the board. My name is Zefir Terminini. I'm a retired physician, and I live on Steeple Church Court in PGA. Thank you for taking care of this water issues. As a physician, the water from the wells are very close to toxic. So even with filters, it is not very healthy. So we're very happy that we're going to have some clean water. However, again, I am not in construction business, but I think the amount is excessive. If the job bid, did anybody bid on the job? And I mean, as I said, I'm not in construction, but whatever that few million dollars to dig a trench and lay down a pipe, it's kind of excessive. Also, some people might not be able to come up with $19,000 with a very short notice, or get locked for 35 years with a hefty penalty. Maybe the board will find a way to help us as retirees, as veterans, as a disabled people. We appreciate that very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Barbara, could you clarify for me? There is not a penalty. You are just paying the interest on the loan? Is that the way I am?
Tremendous amount of jump.
Well, I understand that, sir. However, it's not considered, it's not a penalty. It is the interest on the loan, and you're reimbursing the county for the interest that they are paying over that period of time.
Correct. We, we obtain an outside loan. So this is a loan that we pass through from, from the property owners, goes through the county, is collected on the property taxes, and it's paying back an outside loan. Once that loan is paid off, and I've been here 16 years, I think I've only seen two go to full term, as soon as the loan is paid off, the assessments are, are stopped at that point, because the loan is paid off. So it probably will be paid off a few years early. The interest rate will most likely be quite a bit under 5%. But the, and we did bid the project, but we still have contingency, because in case we run into something in the field, that's why, once construction is done, if we come in under budget, then we adjust assessments, and the contingency there is just in case, because we're not going to levy assessments and then come back and raise them, which we have not done since I've been here.
I discussed with my bankers, any bank will give you better, better rate and better return on this deal. So again, it's something to look into. Let us know. Is there a way we can just extend to September 20 date? I mean, I, I would notify the first time, maybe like three weeks ago with a letter. And, and there was another letter with the expenses, the fees for every item. It happened that I have reviewed that with a construction friend of mine, and he said it, I'll do what would happen with that money.
Madam Chair.
So would the job bid over, or just we're, we're stuck with it?
Madam Chair, if I could add, Ms. Geller, in the history that you've been doing this, and you said 16 years, and you and I are kind of about right there. I don't recall one MSBU that this county has ever moved forward with that has exceeded. Maybe there was one on a fluke, but to my knowledge, all of them have actually come in under budget. From the, these are, as you mentioned, are conservative numbers. So in all likelihood, with that kind of a track record, those numbers are going to go lower than what we have to give you, worst-case scenario, if you will.
I understand, but we, we get hit with that number. And as I said, two construction companies, they said, "We do the same job, not even better, with half of the price." I said, "There must be a problem with the numbers." But again, I mean, I'm asking the board to look into that. We'll save the homeowners some money, and we're, happy days are here again.
Okay.
We don't have to ruin any Christmas for my friend here.
Madam Chair. So, I'm sorry, did you have something to say?
I just have a comment. So I know that they're saying that they could have done it for less, but I don't know that they really actually saw the plans to actually bid it appropriately. So that could be why they are making that statement. However, I would like to say that this has been something that I personally have worked on in the last three years since I've came here. I had several residents that live in this development come to me and say that this is something they wanted, and their water was bad. The gentleman that just spoke, that the president approached me when I first came up here, this is how long it's taken to get here. There's been multiple conversations, there's been multiple conversations on behalf of him, I'm sure. And I also want to thank you, Barbara, but I also want to thank Joanne Riley. This was very, very cumbersome to overcome. There was multiple easements that had to be in conversation with private homeowners in, in the development there. They had to go through, they had to achieve the easement. They had to go through, they had to achieve the easements. This is a long process that's been going on for almost three years. We're finally here, and I can tell you that I know over 50% of the people that live in your area have personally contacted my office.
Beautiful.
And they want this. And so I just wanted to just, you know, I think it's important. We know you're a rock star, Barbara, but I also want to recognize Joanne Riley because I know together y'all were a great team in doing this, so.
Sir?
I sent a specimen of my well to the CDC, and they said, is that sewage? I said, this is our well water. He said, you better not drink it. Then I sent them another sample from the filter, after the filter, and they said it's still very high in copper, in selenium, and sulfur.
Okay.
Please, it's a health issue problem.
Sir, now it is...
Are we still on public comment?
Yes.
Do we have anybody else wishing to make public comment?
You have to come up.
You have to come up.
Please.
Please, you got to go to the mic.
We have to record all this, sorry. Make you a movie star.
So you know when you bring in city water and sewer, and sometimes it's billed differently, like it comes to the street from your house to your driveway, does this include it coming up the driveway into the house as well? Or do you have to hire an electrician and plumber to connect to it down at the street?
Yes. We can only work within the rights of way that we have easements in. So the meter will be placed right on your property line within our easement, and then it will be up to you or the HOA. Sometimes they hire a plumber to do, several of them, to go from your house to the meter.
That means you'd have to hire an electrician as well as a plumber?
No, just a plumber. There's not power.
I mean, well, to hook into your house, I guess there's no...
No, it's just a plumber that you would need.
So you have to hire a plumber, which is paid probably by foot from the street to the home, right?
I would imagine so, yes.
Okay, so that's an additional cost to the resident?
Right.
I just, that's the only question I had.
Yeah, but just so you know, you do have to have a plumber. However, you don't have to have a plumber. If you have a handy husband, your husband can do it. So this is not that you have to reach out...
It doesn't have to pass a permit or...
No, not to bring it to your home. You can do it personally if you have a handy husband, which most of us do.
Okay. But that is an additional cost per foot, though, right, from the street?
It's not through the county, so that's a cost that you...
I just want to make, do the residents know that?
Okay.
They do.
Yes, this is our fourth public meeting on the project, and that's been discussed.
Okay, thank you.
So, Barbara, we did pretty much this in the city of Port St. Lucie. And it is typical that they run the lines, we paid for the lines, and then if you wanted them run to the house, we paid for that. My husband is not as handy as yours is, Kathy. So mine didn't do that, but, you know, I've seen it happen all over the city. But the other thing I wanted to address is the cost factor. And it appears, so please correct me if I'm wrong, we have thrown out worst-case scenario. The dollars could come in less, number one. And the other part of that is that the interest rate could come in less. Now, is that interest rate fixed?
Yeah, it will be once we close on the loan.
Okay.
And that will, after this public hearing, we have to go through bond validation, which can take up to 90 days. It depends on the judge's schedule. At that point, we'll be ready to close on the loan. But until that time...
We won't know the rate.
We don't know for sure.
Right, I get that.
Well, there is a subsequent agenda item on tonight's agenda that has a proposed bond resolution, and the financial advisor is recommending a loan from Center State Bank, and I believe the interest rate is 2.67%.
Correct.
Right, but it's not guaranteed until we close.
Until you close.
Right.
However, that rate is half of the rate, a little bit more than half of what you quoted.
Right.
And that makes a big difference, so...
It does. And just to make another point, this is falling at a kind of odd time of the year, this assessment. If we don't get the bond validation done before September 15th and we don't know the actual interest rate, it may be that we levy the assessments for one year this year at the 5%, and then adjust it next year because we have to have everything to tax collector by September 15th legally. So that's, it's kind of, we're working with it. We know everybody needs this water and everybody needs the fire protection, so instead of postponing it and not collecting it until next year, we're moving along. So we've looked at all kinds of options to get it done, and if we do that, they would get credit for whatever, if there was extra interest paid, they would be getting credit for that. Hopefully, we're hoping that it goes through really quickly through the system, and we can get the correct interest rate on this year.
Okay.
So that we don't have to do that.
And then you will notify them of their actual assessment?
Yes.
So once again, you will get a letter saying, this is where we came out. Leslie, you have something to say?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to provide one quick item of clarification. If you own your own home, you can pull an owner-builder permit. You do not have to have a licensed plumber, but you do need a permit.
And is that, that's in private, in this private subdivision as well?
Yes. If you're doing work on your property, you do need an owner-builder permit. All right. Thank you.
I have one more question, too, Madam Chair, for Barb. Say if it's $19,000 and a homeowner says, hey, I have $10,000. Can I pay the $10,000 and just finance the rest? Is that possible?
That would be a tax collector issue. I don't think that we've ever had anyone do that. It would be up to, I believe it would be up to them whether that can be done. Dan, do you know?
Again, it would be a tax collector. I don't know that they allow partial payments, but that would be a tax collector.
I was just thinking, a holiday, somebody, you know, they got $10,000, and they say, well, I don't have 19, but I can put 10 down so I don't have to pay interest on the whole thing. But there's no prepayment penalty, so I guess, okay, thank you.
Madam Chair? Couple of things. Is at least one firefighter...
Chris? I got to interrupt you.
Okay, that's fine. I appreciate it.
Let's close the public hearing first, will we?
Oh, yeah, very good.
Do we have anybody else who wishes to speak? Okay, seeing no one, I'm going to close the public hearing. And Commissioner?
Yeah, couple of things. There's at least one firefighter in the audience and understands the value of hydrants in a community. The St. Lucie County Fire District undertook a huge effort in past years to lower our ISO rating from a nine to a three. We moved forward with accreditation, and so that is actually continuing to bring down fire insurance for residents, and it's substantial. With these fire hydrants, I would suggest, once it is in place, that you contact your insurance companies. You will see a significant decrease there. The other side of that, we heard from the residents about the water quality. There is a savings over the course of a year when you have potable water coming in that is brought in by the city or the county, in that your salts, your filters, that whole processing system is on average anywhere from $1,200 to $1,500, depending on the size of your system. So that's a cost, and the maintenance goes away. So when you're looking at $1,795 or, say, $1,800, you can see that there will be a significant savings over the course of the year. In that area, the fire district is currently bringing in tenders to bring in water. So your fire protection will be significantly improved, and I think we have one of the best fire districts, but those fire hydrants make a difference for us, for your safety and your protection. I just wanted to share that because there is a value to what's coming in, and there's probably a savings there, kind of an offset. It may not be 100%, but as stated, the water quality will be that much more improved, and I think the health and welfare of the community will be improved as well. Not to mention clean clothes.
That's a big deal. Any further comments, questions? Barbara, thank you very much for your presentation. Appreciate it. So we come to the point of...
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you.
Madam Chair? I was just, yeah, you're going to do it? Since they are on the backside, could we go ahead and do the secondary part to this, Madam Chair, so that we can get that over with?
On the regular agenda, it's 10A2.
10A2?
Rest of validate the bonds.
You ready for me?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This item, as indicated, is 10A2. It's on the regular agenda, but it does relate to the item that we just discussed. That is the Sable Creek MSBU. In this case, it relates to a revenue bond that we're proposing to issue, a Series 2019. A majority of the property owners within the Sable Creek subdivision have requested potable water and fire hydrants. The provider is not the county, it's the Reserve Community Development District, and they are willing to provide the service, but they don't have the funds necessary to construct the needed infrastructure. So they approached the county with the idea of the county creating a municipal service benefit unit to levy special assessments on the benefit property within the subdivision. Normally, the county's not authorized to levy special assessments to construct private infrastructure. In this case, the homeowners' association have conveyed dedications and easements, as has been previously mentioned, to the county and the Community Development District to allow the installation of the water service. In addition, the county won't be providing utility services, but we will be assisting another governmental entity, that's the Community Development District, who will be providing service. As Ms. Geller indicated, to avoid any future legal issues, we intend, as a condition precedent, to file a bond validation proceeding, seeking entry of a final judgment validating our authority to issue these bonds and levy the assessments. I won't go through the history, but there is, dates back to October and September of 2017. We did adopt an initial assessment resolution this May. Our financial advisor, Mr. Glover, from PFM Financial Advisors, did request proposals from local lending institutions to provide a 20-year loan. There was only one proposal received from Center State Bank, but that was a really good proposal. And so the financial advisor has recommended approval of that. I believe the interest rate, as I indicated, was 2.67%, which is a very good rate. And so he's recommended that with his memorandum of August 5th. The resolution that's attached to your memorandum was prepared by the county's Bond Council. The resolution, if approved, would authorize the issuance of a special assessment revenue bond in an amount not to exceed $3,230,000. This would not be a lien on any county revenues. It would be secured by a pledge of special assessments. Madam Chair, staff recommends approval of the resolution and authorizing the chair to sign.
We have approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. We have item E? Are we... No, we're done. Okay, I have been asked to take a break. So if everybody has got a consensus to do that, we will be back in about five minutes. Thank you.
It doesn't matter, I'm happy for you to do it. Be excited if you did it, actually, but I'll do this. And Mr. Landry is here, just in case the board has any questions. This, as you indicated, Madam Chair, is a public hearing. It relates to Resolution 19-148, amending the district's rate schedule. The board previously amended the schedule in July of 2016, and then again in December of last year, we authorized the automatic adjustment of various rates and charges for customers within our water and sewer district. District staff, represented by Mr. Landry, has recommended certain revisions be made to the 2016 rate resolution, mainly in customer classifications and applicability, together with the removal of master metered wastewater service gallonage caps and certain residential non-metered wastewater service charges, as well as the creation of a combined wastewater We, at staff level, have prepared an update to the rate resolution to reflect the automatic rate adjustments, and the revisions have been incorporated. If adopted, the proposed changes would be effective September 1. And this is a public hearing.
This is a public hearing. I will open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward. Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further comment?
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, we go to the regular agenda. We have taken care of item A1 and 2. We are on A3, Bio-Solids Rulemaking, Chapter 62-640, Florida Administrative Code.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, that's exactly right. This is the bio-solids issue. The board has really taken a very much of an interest in this, both publicly and also with regard to other agencies. We've adopted an ordinance, a very strong ordinance, it's only in its kind, and we've, again, been very interested in the water quality of our lagoon and surrounding areas. There is, thankfully, at the state level, they're also looking at this issue, and they're proposing some rules on bio-solids, and they're inviting comments from various interested parties. Actually, our staff has already submitted technical comments, as has Martin County staff, Indian River County staff, and actually, one of the county commissioners for Indian River County, Mr. Solari, has also submitted. Given the board's interest in this issue, county staff has drafted, with Mr. D.'s assistants or outside expert, for board consideration, a proposed comment letter to be signed by the board chair. It references the earlier letters that I just suggested. It talks about the board's interest. Really, Mr. Diane is here. We discussed this briefly at the informal meeting, if the board has any technical questions. I think from a layman's standpoint, I think there's regulations on what they call Class B bio-solids, but Class AA is really DAX, it's best practices, but it has similar impacts on the water quality from a phosphorus standpoint, as I gather, and perhaps Mr. Diane could confirm that, but I think that's one of the key points in the letter, is that we think that should be regulated as well. And again, we have a letter that needs to go out by the 15th. I've actually got it ready tonight, if you approve it, for you to sign, and we'll submit it, if that's the board's pleasure. Again, Mr. Diane is here, and available if the board has any questions.
Madam Chair, I just want to thank staff, Dan, Mr. D., and certainly, this board has been proactive in protecting the safety, welfare of our community from bio-solids effluent issues and protecting the lagoon. If there's no further comment, we have done a great job getting this thing done, and if I can get support, I'd like to move approval of this item and move it along.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Okay, we go on to B2, which is Publix at Andreo Commons. The site plan, major site plan?
Commissioners, for the record, Kara Wood with Calvin Giordano and Associates, the county's planning consultant, excuse me. This is a, this item is a consideration of a major site plan application for Publix at Andreo Commons. The applicant, Public Supermarkets, is requesting approval of a major site plan to construct a 48,387-square-foot grocery store with 6,000 square feet of ancillary retail, associated site improvements, and reservation of 4.52 acres to integrate six future retail sites. The applicant is seeking approval for Phase 1 totaling 54,387 square feet. The subject property is located on a 17.87-acre site at the northwest corner of Andreo Road and Emerson Avenue, near the Lakewood Park community, about two and a half miles south of the Indian River County line. Generally, the area is defined by vacant parcels of former citrus groves. The Andreo Schoolhouse Park and Historic Site is immediately to the east across Emerson Avenue, and to the west is the new FDOT retention area constructed with the widening of Andreo Road. The subject parcel has commercial general zoning and is surrounded by agricultural one zoning on three sides. To the east, you'll see the institutional zoning district of the Andreo Schoolhouse, and to the north of that is Waterstone Estates' planned unit development. The future land use is town villages and countryside, or TVC. TVC has prescriptive design standards that require urban form with buildings pulled to the street and walkable blocks and neighborhoods. Since this is the first purely commercial project proposed within the TVC planning area, I'll take, I'll talk a little bit about how the regulations apply to the site design of a large grocer, just to provide some context. To show what the TVC standards may require, I've illustrated examples of other public stores. Some precedents for Publix in truly urban neighborhoods are on Blue Heron Boulevard in West Palm Beach, which is to the left, and South Andrews Avenue in Fort Lauderdale, which is the photograph to the right. Both of these examples have multi-level parking garages behind the buildings with separate entrances for pedestrians and shoppers arriving by car. This is generally the type of retail development that TVC contemplates, with buildings pulled up to the street in a truly pedestrian environment, although in this county, not quite so dense. This shows an aerial of the existing conditions in downtown Fort Lauderdale, highlighting the location of Publix from the previous slide. Urban retail with structured parking makes sense in an environment that has both commercial and residential uses with multi-story buildings. This store is designed as a liner building to a parking garage that fills one whole city block, so you can see from the aerial that this is an incredibly dense area with very high-rise buildings. By contrast, the subject application is in a rural but developing urban environment. In an attempt to create balance between the strict requirements of the TVC land development regulations and the sparseness of the current conditions in this area, staff has spent the past year collaborating with the applicant on ways in which Publix can adapt its model to be more appropriate for this site. Also, it is of note that the subject property has existing commercial general zoning, so staff is acutely aware of the need to ensure the applicant's property rights are preserved. As a cue for accommodating current conditions while anticipating potential development as future market demands, the Publix at City Place is a hybrid example. This site uses surface parking, not structured parking, and fits parking lots into walkable block sizes. The TVC comprehensive plan limits block sizes to ensure walkability without monotony, so even parking lots must be designed to fit within required dimensional standards. Allowing surface parking lots results in lower upfront design and construction costs, while also allowing for future development of parking lots into buildings if the market demands that in the future. So you can see here, this rectangle laid over the parking lot, the existing surface parking, just demonstrates how, in the future, if more intensity is called for, that could be proposed in that same walkable block size. This is the proposed site plan for your consideration this evening. The applicant is requesting approval of a major site plan in order to construct a Publix shopping center totaling 48,387 square feet, support retail totaling 6,000 square feet, along with associated parking and stormwater improvements. The applicant has used street types from the TVC Land Development Code and has conformed to all requirements of the TVC comprehensive plan, including walkable block sizes even in parking lot designs, much like the example at City Place. The Board of County Commissioners will need to approve development of future building lots through major adjustments to this major site plan and according to the TVC development standards. And this graphic simply shows where retail liner buildings could be placed in the future if the market demands, consistent with the full intent of the TVC land development regulations. While this application is not subject to the community architectural standards, the applicant has provided conceptual elevations for your consideration. And with that, staff has determined that the proposed application meets the standards of review for major site plans in Chapter 11 of the Land Development Code and is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the comprehensive plan. As such, staff recommends approval of the major site plan application, subject to the conditions outlined in the draft resolution. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions, and of course, the applicant is here as well to answer questions.
Questions, comments?
Madam Chair, I'm just, I'm going to make a couple comments. First off, I want to thank both Kara and the applicant. You know, when the TVC was done a long time ago, and I'll be honest, I was not, did not even vote for it in favor of it, but because it is such a strenuous planning process for any development to go through, and it's in a brand-new, virgin land, I'll call it, as far as development goes. So I am very pleased that we now have come up with something, and I think there were concessions done on both sides to get us there, so I wouldn't mind, and I'll say it publicly, congratulations to being the first man out. Publix, you did good. But I will make one comment, and I've brought it up to staff, and I've brought it up to the applicant also, and I don't know if you've got a picture of the actual site, and it doesn't show the landscaping, but I know in the TVC, the landscaping far exceeds what our normal landscaping would be in other areas. And on that retention area, the wet retention over on the north corner there, if you look at the landscaping one, and this doesn't have to change tonight, and I'll get there, it is heavily landscaped entirely around that wet retention. My comments have been, to both staff and the applicant, is the flowway that was, is proposed to go through the TVC, that this is either going to be the beginning or the end, if you will. You've got a retention pond in the back, other piece of property, I believe, and then you've got DOT's retention pond just to the west of there, and if there's ever to be a connection, I don't, there you go, as you can see, and then the corner's coming in there. Again, it becomes either part of or something. When you heavily vegetate something like that, picture it out five, 10 years, you're never going to see the water. You're not going to be, it's not going to be inviting to make it that park-like look of inviting people to walk through it. In fact, it'll probably be yucky. So I've just asked staff, you know, if we're going to start going outside the box a little bit more, you know, maybe if you just did the landscaping on the north and the south end of the pond, and maybe put in a fountain, which to me would be much more attractive and inviting of walkway-type of thing for the look that's trying to be achieved. Again, it's not, doesn't have to change, but as they come through the process, I would recommend there would at least be some discussion on that.
Okay, noted. Thank you.
Madam Chair. So Commissioner Hutchinson, I, it sounds like we had a lot of the same conversations as Ms. Woods and I did, so.
As you can see, and then the corner's coming in there, again, it becomes either part of or something. When you heavily vegetate something like that, picture it out five, 10 years, you're never going to see the water. You're not going to be, it's not going to be inviting to make it that park-like look of inviting people to walk through it. In fact, it'll probably be yucky. So I've just asked staff, you know, if we're going to start going outside the box a little bit more, you know, maybe if you just did the landscaping on the north and the south end of the pond, and maybe put in a fountain, which to me would be much more attractive and inviting of walkway type of thing for the look that's trying to be achieved. Again, it's not, doesn't have to change, but as they come through the process, I would recommend there would at least be some discussion on that.
Okay, noted. Thank you.
Madam Chair. So Commissioner Hutchinson, I, it sounds like we had all the same conversations as Ms. Woods and I did. So my concern also was, this is the TVC, and there's been exceptions made to put this in, and I'm excited that it's here. I think the people in the North County are excited that it's coming, and I think this is a positive thing. The conversations that I did have with staff and Ms. Woods is the fact, though, that it's the TVC, and under the current normal guidelines of the TVC, there were exceptions made. So in moving forward, because of the cumbersome of the TVC, I too, Commissioner Hutchinson, had conversations with Ms. Woods and said that when the next developer wants to come in, I hope that you work with them as well as you do this one, in order to make things happen, because we do need some of this up there. So I know that you worked very hard to make this work, and again, I've had conversations with the applicant, and thank you for being here as well, and I will support this tonight. I just, in moving forward, hope that whoever comes, if they're inside the TVC, that you work as hard with them as you did this one to make it happen.
Yes, Madam Chair. Commissioner Townsend, I appreciate those comments, and admittedly, these are, the TVC is a very unusual comprehensive plan element and form-based code, when, not long after its adoption, when the county was going through some challenges to the comprehensive plan, we had an opportunity to really learn about what the nature of the concerns were from those residents and property owners who were challenging, and so that was a helpful learning process. And in subsequent years, as when I was working for the county full-time, I had the pleasure of receiving a number of emails and phone calls from planning graduate students all around the country, wanting to find out, what is this about? What was our process? You know, how is it going? Because this is, because this is so unusual, there are a number of communities that have form-based codes and design standards such as this in their land development regulations, but to have this be such a comprehensive planning process and such a detailed comprehensive plan element is unusual. Having said that, we're always learning. As staff, we get to learn what influences market demand and what developers need, what is difficult for them in terms of making concessions, and even though I personally, as a staff person, have 12 years, I believe, of experience on this site, because previous property owners have attempted to develop this site for a grocer, and I think some of that history is in your staff report, just to provide some context to, this isn't just about the TVC. Before the TVC, Publix tried to go here as well. So all along the way, we get to learn from each other, and I think that that's, you know, these are always good examples of, how can we do it better? Where do we need to change things? Where do we need to provide flexibility? So yes, thanks for bringing your attention to that.
Madam Chair, and it's also important, Kara, because you, as you pointed this out to me, that even though this is in the TVC, the real winner for you was the fact that it was a corner and it was commercial. So that was a big, a proponent of you being okay with this and staff, because of the zoning that was underlying, had it not been in the TVC, it would have been a commercial site anyway.
Indeed, and that was, and that was part of my comment about honoring the commercial general zoning. They had entitlements before the TVC was adopted, and such a small percentage of the existing zoning in the TVC area is commercial general. I think it's, you know, it's maybe in the low double digits, whereas 90% of the zoning is agricultural one. So the land development regulations are really primarily drafted to address residential development at that base density of one dwelling unit per acre, and how, and how commercial units can be co-located with that residential development. The commercial development, the purely commercial development is unusual, and this is the largest site of commercial general zoning in this area. So we're just cognizant of all of those pre-existing factors.
Thank you.
We're excited on the North County.
Great, me too.
I think there's a lot of people that are waiting for it. Commissioner, do you want to add? Okay. So if there are no further questions or comments. That was quick. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay.
Overnight success.
We go on to the announcements. Mr. Tipton.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just as a reminder, first week of school, so drive carefully. Our next meeting is August 20th, here in these chambers, at 9:00 a.m., and then our offices will be closed September 2nd, which is Labor Day.
I know, it's hard to believe, isn't it? Further comments? Nope. Meeting adjourned.